You can press it, Sherri. Two o'clock.
Roll call.
Gray.
Here.
Harding.
Here.
Melton.
Here.
Pauls.
Here.
Palermo. Festerson. Mr. President.
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for opening remarks by Councilmember Amy Melton.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You know, I just want to take, right now, in the state of kind of our, our nation, I know we have a lot of, a lot of political disagreements going on and, and names being called and we have protests and, and a lot of different things going on right now i- in our country. But what I'd like to do is I think the one thing that we have in common is we, we are all here, we are all blessed by God to live in one of the best countries in the entire world because in this country we are all able to still have our opinion and voice our opinion. But what I would like to do is just ask God to give everybody a special blessing, whether it be the protester in the street, uh, the mom at home, our children that are sitting in school wearing their masks and not being able to talk to their friends. But God, please, just look down on all of us and thank you. Thank you for giving us such a wonderful, wonderful country to live in. Thank you.
An affidavit, affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting and a current copy of the meeting act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. We thank you for joining us here today. As courtesy to those in attendance and to facilitate the conduct of our business, we ask that you turn off or silence all electronic devices. Madam Clerk, we have a proclamation first. Councilmember Festerson?
Today we want to recognize two great philanthropists and community leaders. I've had the pleasure of working them, working with them for over twenty years, which seems hard to believe, in various roles and in various projects. And they've been involved in virtually every major civic project over that period of time and have come to define what we know as public and private partnerships in our city. So we appreciate their contributions and I appreciate their friendship too. I know we have Sue Morris here today with her family, want to recognize them too, including her son who serves on the Omaha Planning Board. I'll read this proclamation. We may have some remarks from other council members and some remarks from Ms. Morris and maybe even a photo afterwards. So the proclamation reads, reads as such. Whereas Heritage Services was incorporated in August nineteen eighty-nine with the goal of responding to the capital needs of the Jocelyn Art Museum and the Western Heritage Museum, two of Omaha's most treasured institutions. And whereas Walter Scott Jr. took the helm as chairman when Heritage Services was formed and has enthusiastically served in this role for thirty-one years. And whereas Sue Morris joined Heritage Services in nineteen ninety-five and was named president in nineteen ninety-six, serving for twenty-four years and raising over seven hundred and twenty-two million dollars in philanthropy. And whereas during their tenure at Heritage Services, Morris and Scott have overseen more than one billion dollars in projects and venues which benefited the city of Omaha to include the Jocelyn Art Museum, the Durham Museum, the Holland Performing Arts Center, the Doherty Conservatory at Lordson Gardens, the Veterans Affairs Ambulatory Center, TD Ameritrade Park, the Salvation Army Crock Center, the Strategic Air Command and Aerospace Museum, Baxter Arena, Santa Frances House Homeless Shelter, Dew Space, the CHI Health Center and the Riverfront. And whereas Sue Morris and Walter Scott Jr. have committed decades of their lives helping Heritage Services fulfill its mission, be ethical and good stewards of donor money, do background research, be diligent and be patient, look for products that fulfill a community need and are sustainable, find product sponsors, don't stop fundraising until the goal is met, and celebrate success briefly and then start the hard work on the next project. Now therefore be resolved, the Omaha City Council thanks Mrs. Sue Morris and Mr. Walter Scott Jr. for their stewardship as leaders of the Omaha philanthropic community. And we wish them well as they retire from Heritage Services and pass the torch to the next generation of community leaders, although I know that your work is not done. Thank you so much for your service and all you've done for the city of Omaha.
So my name is Sue Morris and I live at two five four one North One Hundred and Sixtieth Street. I asked Pete if I'm supposed to do that.
She's learned that over the years.
For the past twenty-five years I've been in front of the city council, um, coming to talk about vision, talk about projects and ways to make our community a better place to live. And you have responded in very positive ways. Over twenty-five years, sometimes it hasn't been easy. We've had a lot of meetings, pre-meetings, talking about how to make some changes and make things work. But I think the most important thing that you've allowed Heritage Services to do, and we have done with the city, including the mayor's office and all the departments, is there's been a level of trust. That's what it takes to do public-private partnerships, is that amazing level of trust and that comfort level, that the information that we share with you and the city shares back with us, that we can come together. On behalf of Walter Scott Jr., I thank you for this recognition. There is so much more that can be done and more to happen in Omaha. This is an amazing community. I'm proud to be part of it. I'm proud to live here with my family and friends and I thank you very much.
Thank you, Sue. Madam Clerk.
Item six, an ordinance to approve a major amendment to PUR overlay district located at six four zero five Center Street and to approve the development plan, planning board and planning department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item six begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Mr. Harding.
I, I did have my light on. Sue, before you, I was hoping, uh, I didn't know they were gonna get up and leave right away. I, I did have my light on. Sue, we, we can't let you get away that, that easily if Mr. President will allow me to.
Without objection. So order.
And now this will be very anticlimactic, but I just wanted, um, I, I said to you before, um, before we started and after hearing Pete read the proclamation, I said, you know, whatever words that are said here today about you and your service and, and Mr. Scott, there, there aren't enough words to really capture all that you have committed to, um, the city of Omaha and the, the region and, uh, and Mr. Scott, with Mr. Scott's leadership and you will, you will truly be missed. Um, you have, um, you've made such an impact on our community. And I know you're leaving it in, in, uh, in good stead with, uh, with Mike and, um, and Rachel. I think, uh, as you said, Omaha has so much more to do and we appreciate everything that you have gotten us to this point. Because it's, it's, it's truly a baton that will be picked up and it was because of you and Mr. Scott leading off the relay that we are now in that race. But thank you so much for your commitment and your family's commitment because it takes, I, I know it's, it takes a lot and what I think is also great is what you have instilled not only in, by your actions, but with your family and now Pat being on the, the planning board. I think we'll see a lot of the, the Morises around for a number of years. And I know that will continue on in other generations and, and we appreciate that commitment. It shows what Omaha has in front of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harding. We will now return to item number six, the public hearing. Proponents.
My name is Kyle Hazy with E&amp;A Consulting Group, one oh nine oh nine Mill Valley Road, representing the applicant, Access Bank. Uh, I am here before you today. Um, previously we had a approved PUR for sixty-four oh five Center Street. Uh, it was the location of the old Amato's building, um, as outlined, uh, here in black on the, on the overhead projector. Um, that building has now been razed, um, as what's shown on here. Uh, we previously had a two-story building on site. After we had the approved PUR, they made some changes to their, their programming. Um, they have removed the second floor aspect of the building and, uh, put a drive-through in, um, at that location uh, to meet the needs of, um, what they feel is gonna be the needs of their customers. Um, the building will still be, uh, architecturally, um, the same as far as materials go, um, just without the second story, uh, aspect to the building. Um, with that, I'll make myself available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Gray. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item six is approved, six to zero. Harding abstains. Item seven, an ordinance to rezone property located at one seven three eight South Thirteenth Street from GI District to MBD District, planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on item seven begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Gray. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item seven is approved, seven to zero. Item eight, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the MCC overlay district to incorporate into that district the property located at five eight one zero South Forty-second Street. Planning board and planning department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item eight begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item eight is approved, seven to zero. Items nine and ten can be considered together for property located at one three three two five Millard Avenue. Planning board and planning department recommend approval. Item nine, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the MCC overlay district to incorporate this property into that district. Item ten, an ordinance to approve a PUR overlay district in a CC district for this location and to approve the development plan.
The public hearing on these items begin at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Pauls, you're recognized.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. This actually is located in downtown Millard. Used to be the Roadhouse. Uh, I've had, uh, a couple people just that they have a concern. And, uh, since I'm talking to myself apparently, uh, they, I'm just gonna make note of it because I told them I would bring it up. They're concerned, uh, they like the idea of a health clinic there, but they are concerned about the dumpster which is not located not too far from their house. There are a couple houses right off on Cotner, right off of Millard. And I'm just making note of that, letting, letting them know that I'm letting the, uh, people who are developing it know that there is a concern. And, uh, although they do appreciate having a new building in that area. But it is in downtown Millard. Which I am a little disappointed there's not somebody here speaking to that issue. Thank you.
At this time you have to be called to the microphone. Are you with the project?
Yes.
All right, I'll call you up. Come on up, sir, and identify yourself.
My name is, uh, John Andrews. I'm an architect with Leo Daley and I'm here, uh, just to, as a matter of course, as a request from the, uh, the actual developer. And so to your point, we, we definitely will note that and.
And what, what is your address?
Uh, my address would be eighty-six hundred Indian Hills Drive, Omaha, Nebraska.
Thank you. And you're happy to answer any questions?
And I will answer any questions.
I would yield the floor. Councilmember Pauls, if you have any more?
Yes, I just, they're just concerned that the business, early in the morning, dumping, picking up, trying, I just wanted to make sure that, uh, that, uh, I spoke to that issue. And I thank you for coming out.
And behalf, I will pass that information along. Thank you.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you. What's the pleasure of the council? Roll call.
Gray. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item eleven, a resolution to approve a special use permit to allow a construction yard in the DS District located at one eight zero four Paul Street. Planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on item eleven begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon. My name is Natalie Williams. I'm an attorney at Baird Home Law Firm. My address is seventeen hundred Farnham Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I'm here on behalf of Custom Concrete Designs, the applicant, and we ask that you approve this special use permit. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. And your address was seventeen hundred Farnham?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Gray. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item twelve, a resolution to approve a special use permit to allow equipment repair services in the LA District located at two nine one zero North One Hundred and Eighteenth Street. Planning board and planning department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item twelve begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Stephen Rannam from Croker Heck Law Firm on behalf of the applicant and we recommend approval on just here for any questions. Two one two zero South Seventy-second Street, Omaha.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item thirteen, an application to consider a class C liquor license for Nadi Buddha Burger Bar located at seven zero seven South Twenty-fourth Street.
The public hearing on item thirteen begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Name and address?
Name, the, name is, uh, my name is Fatia Ali. The address at the location is seven zero seven South Twenty-fourth Street in Omaha, Nebraska.
And are you the applicant?
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Or are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item thirteen is approved, seven to zero. Item fourteen, an application to consider a class C liquor license for Cool Greens located at three six one eight Farnham Street, Suite A. Is communication from the planning department regarding permits.
The public hearing on item fourteen begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes. Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. Sean Kelly, two eight zero four South Eightieth Seventh Avenue, appearing on behalf of the applicant today. We are aware of the communication from the planning department and permits will be obtained before, um, anything's allowed on the outdoor area.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gray. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item fifteen, to consider a liquor license addition application for the casual pint located at eight seven one eight Countryside Plaza to add an area approximately fifty feet by thirteen feet to the west.
The public hearing on item fifteen begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Madam Clerk, was the applicant notified?
Yes.
Do we have time?
Uh, yes, this one's does not, is not subject to the forty-five days. Two week, one, okay.
Is that, roll call.
Gray. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to, seven to zero. Item sixteen, to consider a special designated liquor license application for the Crescent Moon Ale House located at three five seven eight Farnham Street for Oktoberfest events on September twenty-fifth from four PM to two AM on, and September twenty-sixth from eleven AM to two AM with music until midnight each night.
Public hearing on item sixteen begins at this time. I see proponents, but I don't see Bill, but I'm sure you'll do just as well.
Bill's out of town.
Okay. Well, welcome and we'll need your names and addresses.
Yeah, um, Candace Gladwin, forty-eight oh two Capitol Avenue, Omaha.
Uh, Amy Kruger, twenty-seven twenty-seven South Forty-first Street, Omaha.
Thank you. Is it gonna be the same great event this year?
Um, well, we hope great, but not the same. Much, much smaller.
Sure. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Gray. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes, good luck.
Thank you.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Say hi to Bill.
Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearings on agenda items seventeen through twenty-three were held on August eighteen, twenty-twenty. Roll call.
Gray. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items twenty-four through forty-one are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or opponent and your testimony.
Hello, good to see everyone again. I missed you. I'm just kidding. Um, okay, sorry. I had done item thirty-two.
Name and address?
Dr. Aaron Feigstinger, eight one two South Twenty-fourth Street, here on behalf of Together. Just thanking you, uh, for approving this item. It's gonna go a long way to helping people. Um, this money was allocated before COVID, so we're excited to finally put it to use and really make sure people are housed during all of this. So happy to answer any questions you might have as well.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents or opponents on the consent agenda resolutions? Please turn off your cell phone.
Larry, Larry Store, five oh one five Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, six eight one three two. I am against thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two and thirty-three for the, uh, amount of money being spent. And as I recall on some of the news here this week, the White House has issued some grant money and executive orders dealing with these same topics. So I, I request that our elected officials here do not double dip from my billfold and, uh, reinvest money that is maybe coming from federal, other federal grants, which these imply they are federal grants, by the way. And, um, thank you for not televising what's maybe going on behind me. It does, it is kinda distracting. Number thirty-nine. The equipment for helping us detect the targeted enforcement and hotspot operations. Now, this doesn't tell us where the hotspots are. You have to listen to the news. So I'd appreciate knowing where all these hotspots are in Omaha, so I don't have to go there. But I think most of it is probably north Omaha according to the nightly news at five thirty and ten o'clock, five o'clock and ten o'clock every night. It seemed like the majority of it's on the other side of Dodge Street and, and before, uh, Forty-second usually. I, I think that, uh, one second. Oh, yes, and I appreciate not having to sign in this time on every item that we wanna talk on and wait while twenty-nine people that are proponents of something get to talk, but citizens that want to oppose it don't. Women and children had to sit three or four hours.
You're off topic, Mr. Store.
Okay.
We're on the consent agenda resolutions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I did bring my pocket constitution. If Mr. Gray wants to look at one of the items that says.
You're out of order. Please take a seat.
About our, about our rights.
Please take a seat.
He asked us to show him.
Please remove him from the chamber. He's out of order. He was warned. Any other proponents or opponents?
My name is Michelle Keith. I am the, uh, general manager at Olive Garden. I'm for number twenty-four. Um, I'm just here for a proponent to get it approved.
Thank you.
If you have any questions.
Are there any other proponents or opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll, uh, Councilmember Melton, you're recognized.
I just wanna clarify for anybody watching, that, uh, just for anybody watching, hotspots are what all the council members get to request. They are speeding enforcement. It is not used in just north Omaha. It's used all over the city, including neighborhoods that I ask for on a monthly basis and all seven of us, um, ask for specific areas where speeding is an issue, um, to try and protect our kids as they walk to school or walk home from school and other areas. So I just wanted to correct that statement. I felt it very important for people to know what a hotspot was.
Thank you. Councilmember Gray, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, first of all, let me just, uh, say, um, I was, I was thinking about saying something anyway, but I, I think it was better coming from you, uh, Councilmember Melton. Uh, but the fact of the matter is, is that what happens here a lot of times is that people get up, they don't study the agenda, they don't look at the attachments that go to the agenda. They don't study those. They don't do anything else. They come up and they make disparaging statements of one, about one part of town. Um, and they walk away and we sit here after all this time and all these issues that we have talked about in relationship to race and racism in this country for an individual to continue to come in here and sit down. And besides that, I don't think he would know what to do with the Constitution if he had it anyway. But the fact of the matter is, uh, in this particular instance, to, to single out one part of the community only verifies his ignorance. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. And I would point out that, that, that you're supposed to address your remarks to the council and to the extent that you're making remarks about people seated behind you where you're standing uh, is totally inappropriate and everyone else here, uh, just let you know, we don't, we won't be tolerating that. And, you know, I don't know who he was referring to, but if it were people who are not wearing masks, there is a city attorney interpretation that if you're in this council chamber, it's the opinion of the city attorney that you're quote, "seeking governmental city services" and therefore exempt under the current ordinance and not required to wear a mask in this chamber. So we don't want anyone picking on anybody in this chamber. And we do not accept questions from the members, uh, sitting in the chamber. Next item, Madam Clerk. Roll call.
Second. Gray.
You're out of order. Please sit down.
I wanted to come up and speak on one of the items. Give me enough time before you type up what I was gonna say.
Is there some reason you didn't come down when we called the agenda? Okay.
But since I couldn't type it up quick enough, I could just come up there and just, you know, just come over.
We have, I'm sorry, the time for the public hearing is closed.
Public hearing and allow one gentleman.
All right.
Someone can give me a second?
You don't need to vote.
It has to be about an agenda item.
Yes.
Which, come on down, your name and address. And I have a number.
My name is David Mitchell. My address is The Plantation.
Sir, we need your ad, name and address.
That is my address. Or I could give you the exact location of my plantation. It's forty-twenty Mary Street.
Thank you.
So I wanted to talk about, um, I'm, I'm actually a, um, opponent of, uh, agenda item number thirty-nine. Um, I don't believe we need to continuously give raises to people that's doing a bad job. I'm a local business owner myself. And if someone was to, if I have, if I had an employee that was to come inside of my store or do anything disruptive or if the customers had an issue with him, I wouldn't give that employee a, a raise. Now, I also wanna talk about the hotspot because I see we wanna jump this up from thirty-nine thousand to a hundred and two thousand. This is a problem to amend that, that much to have more police officers be in these so-called hotspots. I drive all throughout Omaha. I have three store locations, so I'm all throughout Omaha in Lincoln. These hotspots is actually located in north Omaha. Every time I drive through my own community, I get pulled over at least on average about once a week. That is the truth. I drive through west Omaha. I got two stores out in west Omaha and I never have any issues. The hotspot is located in north Omaha. And like the guy was talking about, he says he was watching the news, the media is continuously portraying this bad. And like the guy was talking about, he says he was watching the news, the media is continuously portraying this bad image of our community, so these hotspots can continuously be put into our community, so then they could, they want to raise the money, the budget, so more money could go to these officers that's doing a bad job in our community, that's giving people tickets for busted taillights.
What?
That's giving people, that's giving people tickets for broken windshields that can't already afford to pay for these broken taillights and these broken windshields, and you want to give these people a raise to continuously come down into our community and destroy it even more?
Please come into order.
That is in order. What's your question?
I, if, please respect the process. If you would just identify the item number you're speaking about.
I did identify the item number. It's item number 39.
Any other item number? Because you, you segued into a hotspot conversation. Is that still on 39?
Yes, that's still on 39.
Okay, thank you. Please appreciate.
Thank you. So, my issue is, I wouldn't approve this, and Councilman Ben Gray, I would recommend you not approving any more funds going to the Omaha Police Department. Please don't approve no more money going to these people that's coming to our community, constantly terrorizing the, constantly terrorizing our people. Just the other day, I got pulled over because I drive a brand-new car with my kids inside of it. They pulled me out the car. They searched it in north Omaha. These hotspots are located in north Omaha. And, um, Councilman, um, A- Amy Melton, I don't know what you're even talking about, saying that these hotspots are all around Omaha. I don't see speed traps set up anywhere else. I see it all around North 30th.
I watch them on a monthly basis, and then I get the report of the number of tickets that are handed out. And in fact, it was my district, I believe, that set the record amount of tickets for hotspots right before COVID, if you all remember that. It was like 87 tickets, and it was, I believe, in the Sunny Slope area on 108th. So, actually, speeding in my district is a huge issue. I get complaints from neighborhoods Willowood, Pepperwood, Hillsborough, uh, Eagle Run is, actually, it's so bad, Brinker gets complaints from people in my district for, for that one. Um, and so, yes, I actually request them. I request specific spots, and actually, we all do. I'm not just me. And then, at the end of the month, um, we get a total of the number of tickets that were issued for each spot that we requested. Typically, we all request, I would say, two to three. That would be about right, Mr. Festerson, because I know you're, you're always making sure you have, you get a lot of those complaints as well. And I think you and I are tied at, at one point for the top two tickets, because we've got some intersections. So, speeding and speed enforcement is something that benefits the whole community and, most importantly, our, our kids, because most of the complaints I get are around schools, and so, these hotspots are very important.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because they are, they're, you see the school zones around town.
Yes.
It's for the enforcement of speed traps in those school zones when we have kids walking to school, and that's all schools.
Right.
So, and it's all over the city. So, I just want to let you know that, um, I, I guess you haven't seen them, but we actually have this specific data and the specific tickets for each of the hotspots for each of the ones that we request. And that's why I was explaining what a hotspot was, because I think people didn't necessarily understand. And I rotate mine throughout the district, although I know everybody would like me to have one in their neighborhood all the time and every month. I've got to rotate them. So, typically, you'll, you'll see them in, in different spots, but we don't let everybody know where they are, because that would be kind of counterproductive if we placed where they all were. So, really, enforcement is the only way that we can combat speeding. Right now, I wish people would just be responsible and not speed, um, but unfortunately, that's not the case. And I don't want to see people speeding in front of King Science Center
Right.
any more than I want to see people speeding in front of Beverage, okay? You know, kids are kids, and they deserve to be safe when they're walking to school, and speeding also leads to, it's one of the number-one causes of traffic accidents, which increases all of our insurance rates and everything. So, in my opinion, the hotspots are a benefit and something that I would like to see our police do. And because they're requested by all seven council members and we get the reports, we know that they're evenly distributed, at least upon the request. And I don't know, I, I think I might request them more than, than the rest for my area count. So, I just, I thought I'd let you know that I understand that you're making some points, but when it comes to the hotspots, it's absolutely wrong, and it's been that way, by the way, for the last seven years since I've been on council, the hotspots.
Thank you, Councilmember Melton. I would just remind council members, Mr. Mitchell still has time remaining on his three minutes, and I calculate you have about 40 seconds.
Forty seconds. And I completely agree with exactly what you're saying with having those hotspots set outside of schools, because we definitely don't want any deaths or any accidents to, especially because they're right in front of our schools. The problem with what I see in the community especially is that they set up these, um, speed traps, and they set up these officers to heavily patrol north Omaha. I was actually just talking about this with a couple people, um, a couple of my, um, associates, that we was all just literally sitting right on 30th and Ames earlier today, and we counted how many police cars drove up it down that street. And you go off to 156 in Maple, you could, you could count within 10 minutes. You won't count not one car unless they're actually going somewhere. But it just seems like they overpopulate the community, and overfunding them more is going to, I, I don't feel like that's going to be beneficial. Where are they going to continuously, um, take people out of cars, continuously harass people in our community?
Thank you. Your time has expired. Then the public hearing is closed. Uh, Councilmember Gray, you're recognized. There is a motion pending. This is in the further discussion.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, first of all, let me say, um, thank you, Ms. Melton, again, uh, Councilmember Melton, for explaining what hotspots are, because evidently, people didn't know. Secondly, I have never, I've only requested hotspots in my district once.
I didn't want to say that, but I knew that you called, but I was going to let you.
Yeah, I've only, I've only, I've only talked about hotspots in my district one time. I should do more, quite frankly, because if anybody has driven on Sorensen Parkway, you know that that's a speedway. And anybody in north Omaha ought to know that that's a speedway. I drove several times, 50 miles an hour, which is 10 miles over the speed limit. Please don't arrest me, people. But anyway, 50 miles, and I had, uh, I, I don't know how many people passed me like I was standing still. So, I haven't requested it, but I should request it for Sorensen Parkway because of what it is. Uh, secondly, in terms of a rate, there's no raise here. The fact of the matter is, is that we're adding dollars so that ended, so that we can do a number of the hotspots in other districts specifically. So, that's what we're doing with this, adding dollars for some of the other districts, because I've only requested hotspots in my district one time, and that was on 20th Street, because there was a lot of traffic going up and down there like it was a freeway as well. So, again, this is people not clear into what they're talking about. So, um, but my intention continues to be to support these issues, quite frankly. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. No further lights. Roll call.
Gray, Harding, Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 42, an ordinance to add Article 3, Sections 12-41 through 12-51 to the Omaha Municipal Code entitled Prevention of COVID-19 to require individuals to wear facial coverings is amendment of the whole.
Councilmember Festerson, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Um, as we all know, what we have in place right now is an emergency ordinance in the city of Omaha that does require, um, the wearing of masks and social distancing with numerous exemptions that I think are practical in nature. Um, we have, and that goes until September 15th at the moment. What we have on the agenda today is the regular ordinance that is still making its way through our process that was introduced at the same time, although what, what's on our agenda today has not been harmonized with, with, with what's, what's currently in place and that would need to occur, uh, prior to anything further happening. But as we noted during the conversation about the emergency ordinance, we continue to get reports from the Douglas County Health Director on our progress as a community, both in terms of positivity rate and ventilator use and hospital capacity and all those things that the experts are measuring. So, we're watching that very closely. During the week of, uh, August 22nd, she reports a positivity rate of 8.6% still in hospital capacity and the low 80, 80%. Um, and cases still on the rise. So, these are things we're watching closely as the second ordinance continues, um, but would not need to take action on it today. Um, so, as we continue to monitor these things and probably amend this ordinance to more closely resemble what's currently in place for, for future consideration, I think the wisest thing to do today is to layover for one week to September 1st, and I would make that motion.
No further lights. Roll call.
Gray, Harding, Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed 6 to 1. Item 43, an ordinance to approve the bid from Arrow Towing for accident and violation towing services for the Omaha Police Department for three years.
The public hearing on item 43 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Mark Lapuza, 10250 Regency Circle on behalf of Arrow Towing. And Brad Aerosmith from Arrow Towing is here as well. Arrow Towing's worked with the city and the county for several years. Looks forward to another opportunity to work under the contract, and we're here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. You look like your dad underneath the mask. He's a good guy.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item 44, an ordinance to approve an agreement with the Women's Center for Advancement in the amount of $46,644.45 for the Douglas County Community Response Team.
The public hearing on item 44 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Amber Parker, Mayor's Office, just here to answer any questions if you have any. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Councilmember Melton, you're recognized.
Yeah, real quick, Amber, since you're here and you might not be here next week when we vote on it, I just wanted to thank you for all of the work you do, not only for this award grant, but we just had a whole bunch of grants in our, in our resolutions in, uh, 24, uh, through 41. And I just don't, I don't think you ever get the recognition you probably deserve for the amount of work that you put into these grant proposals all over for, um, various organizations in our city. And what most people don't understand is, you put a lot of work into this, and it's not the city that gets the money. We're just kind of the conduit, right? The money comes from other places into the city, and then we, we pass it along. We can't use this money for anything else, correct?
Right. The, the majority, and thank you, first of all, for, uh, your appreciation. My whole team thanks you. There's four of us in the mayor's office that do grants. There's other folks within other city departments that also do grants or assist on grants. So, we all appreciate your appreciation. Um, but yes, for this particular award, this was written into the application for the Women's, Women's Center for Advancement. So, this money would have to go specifically to this agency as a subaward for these services.
And, and I know that's how most of our grants are, are operated, because you put specifications when you're applying.
Correct.
And you have to follow that, otherwise, the money goes back.
Correct.
Correct. Thank you, Amber. And again, thank you for all your work, and especially for Women's Center for Advancement. This is so important right now, is, I know their work has increased and doubled, as Councilman Gray, I know, uh, asked for some additional monies coming up for the next year that are coming from the city, due to the amount of work that the WCA is facing right now. So, thank you again for all the work, and for, that you and your team.
Thank you. We appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Melton. Councilmember Palermo, Vice President, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, moving on to item 57, I wanted to place this on file.
Second. Do we need a vote? Roll call.
And this is part of the non-action items. Gray. Harding.
This is the place on file, right?
Correct.
Right.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
I, I won't oppose it either.
Is that a yes?
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Non-action items, items 45 through 58, do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and/or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda as well as the date the item is expected to appear on the agenda for consideration.
Roll call.
Gray, Harding, Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 2:43.